Okay, so apparently we have audio on Zoom, but we do not have it on the live feed or on the stream. Sarah's gonna keep working on that, but we'll at least have the recording for this, so we can proceed. And hopefully we'll get it fixed soon. Okay, so the only other person I had in present that wanted to speak was Shonda Williams. Shonda, there you are.
I'm a little nervous, so I wrote things down. Members of the committee, my name is Shonda Williams and I'm here as a parent of an eighth grader at the Sanford Middle School. I also happen to be a nurse, the former school nurse at the middle school and throughout the district for the past seven years. And I left my position in June to complete my clinical hours as a nurse practitioner. Those who know me know I deeply care for the children and families I served. I'm here to advocate for you to continue to require masks in the school setting. Last year, as COVID surged and walked into the doors of our schools as inevitably it will, there was not a single case of school transmission, and this was largely because of universal masking. It is one of the most effective mitigation strategies we have in our pocket to protect those who are still not eligible to choose vaccination, which is anyone under 12 for the foreseeable future. As community transmissions rise, keeping the school safe for all requires masking. And this is supported by the leading health authorities, public health officials, American Academy of Pediatrics, and scientific research. A word about choice and parent choice for masking. It does not apply here. Inherently, the choice of a parent to not have their child masked takes away the choice of people like me who are actively trying to prevent my family from getting COVID, to protect the vulnerable people who may not have adequate or robust response to the immunizations they have gotten, to prevent future unknown health conditions that may arise, because as we know, we don't know everything about COVID. And I think that it's emerging that there are some potential long-term consequences for people who have it. Not everyone, but I'm not willing to play Russian roulette with my health. I also want you to think, for example, of the students who have siblings who might have had organ transplants, or students that have diabetes, or many other health conditions. They may be being raised by elderly grandparents. That puts them at higher risk, and they also have the right to feel safe and access a full-time education. To, let me see, I think of masking and COVID like secondhand smoke. It's a great analogy for something that's not allowed in certain spaces. People have every right in the world to make their own decisions. It might not be a good decision, but it's their decision and they can impact their own health. But when I have to be exposed to it, or my family is being exposed to it, it's impacting my health. That goes for all the families who are choosing to take this disease seriously and responsibly. The rights of those who want to go on masks and when they impact others, as far as I am concerned. There are simply places you can't smoke a cigarette anymore, and we all accept that. Let's look at it like that in our schools. Finally, I just want to close and thank everyone on the committee for your hard work. I know what goes on behind the scenes. You've continued to pivot and respond to the curveballs that COVID-19 has thrown. It has taken an incredible amount of adaptation, flexibility, and most of all, unseen hard work and difficult decisions that can never please everyone. I urge you to keep your goal of a safe and in-person learning environment for all students and staff. They need that for their mental health, they need that for their social life, they need that for their learning losses. But the only way I think that we can do that is until this thing is on the other side and everyone can get vaccinated and is eligible, we're gonna need to mask in schools. And please don't buckle to the court of public opinion. We need these kids back in school, and I'm afraid if we don't mask, then we're losing our chance to ensure that for them this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Shonda. Okay, Beth, who do we have on the Zoom? Anybody? Okay. Yeah, hey Beth, do you want to just, actually I guess I could say now, anybody on the Zoom that would like to speak right now? If you could just use the raise the hand feature, and we will give you a chance. Going once, going twice? Nobody, Beth? Okay, thanks. I am going to, we did get a number of emails sent into the schoolinfo@sanford.org address. So we had one from a Cara Held, Cara Held maybe? In favor of masking. One from, which for me is it Kale, Kale Parker? Also in favor of masking. Stephanie King, who was expressing the gratitude for the school board administration for the hard work and in favor of masking. And Trey Parisio, did I get that one right, Matt? Who's also in favor of masking and appreciated the work that we're doing. We have another person in person here that signed up. Excuse me, I'm gonna have to ask you to please follow the rules of the meeting, not be disruptive, or you will be asked to leave. You've already been asked to wear a mask, which you're refusing to do. So are you going to be hospitable here? I believe I just read all the ones that came into the school info line. Let me see if there's any other ones on here that I missed. I am in no way being partial. I want to make sure everybody's voice is heard, but I want it to be a respectful adult conversation. Here's one from, sorry, that was the doctor. That's Trey's. Oh yeah, I missed one, Michael Kleinrock, also in favor of the masks. Says it would be a mistake and premature in his professional opinion. Oh, he was the virologist or something. I remember him from the discussion last time. Maura Hurley, he also in favor of the mask mandate. Please just bear with me while I make sure I don't miss any of the emails that have come through. We did get an email from Tom Miskio, former school committee member, who was against the mask requirement and asked that we have an item on the agenda to vote on it again. Oh, here. Nathan Roburge, who was against the masks, thank you Paula. Ed, who spoke earlier. Where am I missing these on mine? Oh, here I go, I'm just not back to that yet. Jennifer Paletta, who was against the masks. I just saw Nathan's as well. James Harmon, who is a teacher at the high school, who was for the mask mandate. Steph Blair, who voted, she says, "I vote no mask." I think now we're starting to get back to before the last school committee meeting, if I am correct. And we mentioned those at the last school committee meeting, so. I apologize if I missed anybody's, but if I didn't read your name off, know that the school committee has seen those emails. And we thank you for communicating your opinions. Okay, so now let's carry on, as you should, yes Steve? Yeah, that's what I was going to next. I just see the one asterix next to a Michael Termath. Does Tammy want to speak as well? No, you don't, Tammy? Okay, then we will have Michael. It's your turn. Oh, is there somebody else back there? We'll have a, we'll have a last call afterwards, so. Hey Michael, is the green light on on the microphone?
No.
Oh, that one's just on, okay.
Is it now?
Yeah, you're all good. Just so you know that we're not having any audio on the TV feed or the stream right now, but we do have it on Zoom and we're recording it, and we'll post that up later, so.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Termath. I'm a parent here in the Sanford School Department. And I thank you and I appreciate the opportunity to come forth in front of the committee today to urge for parents' choice, okay? This is not a, and I understand nationally, this is a partisan debate nationally, okay? But I'm here to speak to you intelligently, right? I follow the science, I follow what my leaders tell me, okay? But this is about us having the opportunity as parents to make the better decisions for our kids. I can only speak for my child, who is in the Sanford School Department. I have several, several kids in the Sanford School Department, both with disabilities and medical allergen problems. So wearing the mask all day at school for the kids, it's a little bit stressful on them, okay? Not only are they, you know, inhaling their carbon monoxide, right? That we all as human beings expel when we respirate. They're continuing to breathe that in, all right? They're continuing to breathe that in without any, any relief, okay? Now, I've been, I've been told by several teachers in the Sanford School Department, and I'm not gonna name names just in fear of reprisal, okay, from this committee. Right? The teachers have told me that when they go to the break room, they don't have to be six feet apart. Right? They can take their masks off and have their break. All I'm asking you guys to do, all right, is to allow that for our children. Okay? Allow the parents, along with our doctors and our physicians, to make that choice for ourselves, okay? When there's a mandate that's put out, and all of us adults, you know, we can handle a lot of stuff, kids can't. You know what I mean? You know, kids get stressed out, they don't understand the reasons behind, you know, hey daddy, why do I have to wear the mask all day at school? When I go to recess, I have to wear the mask at recess, okay? You know, they, they get tired. Okay, when kids get tired and the learning environment is not conducive to, to them having the ability to have a little bit of relief, okay? All the desks and all the schools are six feet apart. So when they get their break at lunch, they're still six feet apart with masks on, okay? So when they're eating lunch, they're able to take the mask down, eat their food, and then they gotta put the mask back up while they're still sitting at the cafeteria lunch table. Okay, so for me as a parent, and I have consulted my physician, my children's physicians, you know, when they have, you know, like my oldest son, he has a lot of allergen problems, he has peanut allergies, right? He has egg allergy, he has milk allergy, things of that nature, okay? And he's already limited on what he can eat anyways, okay? But, you know, he's 12 years old, right? The media, the government officials all say, hey, he can be vaccinated, okay? But right now, there's just not enough proof out there, okay, from the CDC, from the federal government, along with our state partners, okay, to, to actually say, hey, you know what? You know, if he does get this vaccination, what's it gonna do to him, okay? Right, for me, I have my vaccination, okay? I wear my mask, okay? I'm the voice for the voiceless. The kids are the voice, okay? If we're not gonna protect our kids, then who is? And I ask the committee that honestly, who is? Who's gonna protect our children if the parents can't do it? I, I know one thing, is that I'm not gonna allow government to do it, okay? Now, I've worked in the federal government my whole life, okay? I continue to serve my country with honor and distinction. I've served my country 25 years in the US Army, three tours of duty in Iraq. And I'm broke, okay? I'm broke from fighting Al Qaeda, going after the Ba'ath party, going after ISIS, okay? I'm 42 years old and I look like I'm frigging 80 sometimes, all right? So if our kids, if we don't listen to them, okay, what's that gonna teach the future generation? Okay? I know there's certain things that have to be done, guys, for a reason, okay? I understand that, the kids don't. All right, so I implore you, okay? And I ask respectfully, you know, that please weigh the decision, okay? The consequences. The last meeting that was held here, it was put out day of, not before. All right, that made a lot of parents upset, okay? It's optics, right? The optics look bad, okay? The optics look bad that our leadership is failing us, okay? So you guys may be doing your due diligence and doing the hard work, okay? That needs to be done, and I respect that. But when a meeting gets posted at 12 noon on a workday, right? That's not gonna give opportunity for a lot of folks like myself, who will have to work, who have to support our families and put food on the table, to be able to come to this meeting, you know, and air our concerns. You know what I mean? Air our voices, okay? I've served my country my whole adult life. All right, and it feels, and I'll be honest with you, it feels like tyranny. When I hear from school administrators and teachers that say, you know, the decision's already been made prior to the meeting even going into session. That's not right. And I'll be honest with you, that thing right really gets me burned up, okay? It gets me hot, you know? Because people are just gonna make decisions for my children that don't know my kids, that don't know me, and don't know the problems, the medical issues that are associated with them, okay? And we have a good special needs program in this, in this district, but it can be better, guys, okay? It can be better, there's always room for improvement. 25 years in the army tells me one thing as a senior non-commissioned officer, right? You listen to your subordinates, right? You listen to the facts, get the facts, and you make a sound informed decision. You know what I mean? Okay? But yeah, you gotta have input from all sides, not just one side. You know what I mean, that's how democracy works, right? I've been all over the world, I've seen how dictatorships and authoritarian regimes act. There is no voice. It's their way or the highway, okay? So this is still the United States of America. And I ask you guys, please, take it to heart, especially for our kids with special needs, IEP students, students with learning disabilities, right? Our state reps, our state government officials, our governor, right? Our governor left it up to the districts, right? In the state of Maine, Governor Janet Mills, she left it up to the districts, okay? And to deal with blanket, across-the-board mandate, I just don't agree with, okay? All right, now, we're not gonna, you know, agree on every, everything, right? But when it comes to our kids, everybody that's across the street right now, right? They vote blue and they vote red. So this is a nonpartisan issue. Okay, if we want to speak politics, it's a nonpartisan issue. They're speaking for their children, they're speaking for the students of this school department, okay? So I thank you for your time. I urge the committee to please reconsider the mask mandate, okay? I ask you guys that respectfully, due to the fact that, you know, a lot of kids are afraid to speak up. And I've asked them why, and they said because of retribution and retaliation and bullying. Well, if we don't allow bullying in school, then why would we allow it in, you know, partisan issues, right? It has to be nonpartisan, okay? So when the CDC gets their act together and the federal government, okay? And they can properly bring down the science officially and get the FDA on board to officially, you know, certify all these different vaccinations that are out there, okay? Then that's a conversation that we can have for another day, right? I understand about the pandemic. I've seen it firsthand, okay? I get it. But for our kids, you know, there's a lot of kids, each kid's different. A lot of kids can handle this, a lot of kids can't. So if we put a blanket mandate on the children, that everybody wears a mask, you know, folks that have major disabilities and folks that have learning disabilities and folks that have allergies and medical problems, we're doing a disservice to them, okay? So I thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak and to share my First Amendment with you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Michael, and I thank you for your service, well spoken. And we had the lady in the back, we still want to speak. If I could just have you state your name when you come up, so we know who you are, thank you.
Hey Dawn, can we just, what is the gentleman's name?
Michael.
Michael, Michael, I just want you to, you made a comment about the agenda going out on Monday. I just want you to know, the agenda goes out every Wednesday prior to the Monday meeting. So I just want you to be clear, the agenda, there was nothing underhanded. The agenda did not go out on Monday, it went out the following Wednesday. I mean, the prior Wednesday, thank you. So it went out the prior Wednesday.
Yeah, and you know, actually this section really isn't for like the back and forth, but I would, Michael, I'd ask you if you have some questions about that afterwards, maybe we could connect. I could clarify some stuff for you.
That's all I wanted to say, Dawn, because I, you know, I just want to make sure everybody understands that the agenda was sent out the prior Wednesday.
Thanks, John.
It would be on the school website.
Yeah, there is actually, hey Michael, why don't, could you email me like later on? We could hook up some time, I could talk to you about some of this stuff, run through it. You know, I don't really want to bog down right now, but. Yeah, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you, I just wanted you to, I just wanted to be clear.
Okay, so, sorry, back to you now.
That's okay. My name is Tanya Pickering, I have two children in the Sanford School System. One is in fourth grade, one is in eighth grade. Last year, they participated in the Calvert and Edementum Program. That was definitely a different experience for us at home, we made it work, we had incredible help. But with that being said, this year, they were so excited to go back. They got to see their friends five days a week, and for that, I'm super, super thankful. Really, I'm just here to be short and sweet and ask you folks collectively as a group, if, when you're reviewing this mask mandate, perhaps, I don't know if at all possible, once it, is it going to be reviewed periodically? Are there certain numbers? Are you gonna be looking at community transmission as to maybe when we can lessen the mandate? Or if this is going to be a permanent thing through the school year? I just urge you to maybe, if at all possible, provide the community with a little bit more information as to what the hopes and goals are of the mask mandate. Because I know my kids as well are, you know, mom, it's gonna be a long year. You know, they were very fortunate last year staying home, not having to do it. And you know, all the staff and students from last year, I can't imagine going back into another year having that, but that's what it is right now. So I just hope that you can take into consideration, maybe providing us with more information at some point as to maybe if we have low transmission levels in our city, or if you're looking at a specific number before you're considering lessening the mask mandate. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Tanya, that's actually a good segue to later on, because under the superintendent's report, we do have the Safe Return to School update, and we do plan on that being a recurring item for each meeting to keep everybody informed. That's actually why we had the meeting this week. We wouldn't normally have a meeting this time of year, especially after the first day of school, when I know Mr. Nelson has had a long enough day already, but we felt the need to have this meeting to keep that information out there. Okay, so I'm gonna wrap up the public comments, but I am just gonna make one comment now. I, I think it's, this is a difficult topic, I've said it before, I'll say it again. We're talking about individuals' health, safety, their mental well-being. This isn't something we can debate and convince you that it's safe if you don't think you are, or vice versa. So it's really difficult, I'll speak probably for all of us, I assume. We empathize with every parent that comes up here. I, I do personally, I mean, I know my kids would have had a huge problem with it. I'm grateful that they're through this, because I'm not sure how I would have dealt with it. So know that we, we understand, but overall, we do have to go with what we think is best for the majority. So with that, let's move on, communications. I see none, we did talk about the emails that we got in on the masking subject. So we're into committee reports. Superintendent Nelson, construction projects, which I hope we're really starting to run out of.
Sure, I'm happy to announce that at the first day of school today, we were able to attend school at Sanford Pride Elementary. We got our certificate of occupancy last Tuesday. That followed a very long process. We had the week before, to do the power changeover with Central Main Power, we had to turn the power off on Wednesday, Thursday, and most of Friday. And I want to give a big thank you to, there's a lot of people to thank. Obviously, our contractors, our subcontractors, the architect, also working with the Department of Education, working with our maintenance department. I also want to thank for the city, the Fire Marshal Code Enforcement Office. They were great to work with as we worked together on this project. This one went a lot smoother than some of the previous projects. And we were able to get everything set and taken care of. We still have a few items on a punch list, but as I mentioned, we did start school today on time. And I really give a big thank you to our custodians or maintenance and our teachers and our staff. They came in, obviously, throughout when they had an opportunity to set up their classrooms. We were able to have open house in our elementary schools or the middle school last Thursday night under some very difficult and hot conditions. But for us to really turn that around and get that school ready and get that building ready, get all of our schools ready for that, was really a monumental achievement for that. So a big thank you for that. At Sanford Pride Elementary, there is no playground, as I had mentioned in previous meetings, with the playground, that there was a delay. We are still on track for the delay that the equipment is expected to ship by September 10th. We expect to have it on site the week of September 13th. I talked to the playground installation people today, and they are gonna be ready to go and install that and get it right off the trucks with that, provided there are no other further delays. So that will be good news, as we'll be able to turn that around. Kudos to our students and staff at Sanford Pride Elementary to be able to go and do that. To be able to navigate not having a playground at the beginning of school, we wish that was not the case. And we'll continue to move forward with the punch list to complete that, as well as wrapping up the punch list that we have also at the middle school and also at MCS and also the high school and technical center.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Nelson. Next, we've got the SHS SRTC Schedule Advisory Committee.
Sure, so to provide an update, we had a planning and organizational meeting back on August 20th. From the school committee, we had Chair Jamison and Vice Chair Cody in that meeting, as well as some other people. We used that as an organizational meeting, it was a very productive meeting. We talked about what the purpose of the committee was. We also used the time to go over the things that we were looking for in a schedule. We discussed membership of the advisory committee and how we could be able to go and expand that. We talked about some norms and expectations of how we will conduct our work. We also had Beth Luternow from the School Counseling Office came and presented a timeline of what a scheduled adoption would look like for that to be able to happen. We also set some future meetings and some topics. We're looking to meet, try to meet every three weeks and do that a variety of times for the people, to help the variety of people on the committee. Some of those meetings will take place right after school. Some of those committees will happen during Spartan time. I'm not gonna start dancing, so.
You got background music now, Matt.
And some of them will happen at night. Our next meeting is Monday, September 20th. We're really gonna do a lot of background focus on the history of the schedules at the high school, including an overview of the four-block schedule for that. And then, yeah, we've got some other future topics to be able to talk about. I don't know if Dawn and Paula want to weigh in in terms of the meeting as well.
Yeah, I'll just make a couple of quick comments. It really was just an organizational meeting. There are a number of parents in the. There are a number of parents and a couple of students that we want to have involved. So we didn't have everybody there. And I think we did have a couple of additions that we thought we should get in, just to kind of make sure we covered all of the different stakeholders. But this really, we're trying to go into this without any preconceptions. You know, it's not a five-block versus four-block. It's what do we want to achieve for the high school schedule, or high school, and what schedule is gonna make that possible? So, do you have anything to add to that, Paula? They gotta repeat what you just said.
All I said was that I thought it was a really good start. It was a great meeting, first meeting.
But you said it was such conviction, that I thought it needed to be relayed again. Okay.
Can I just ask one question?
Yeah, sure. Are you wanting?
So with the, with, when you were saying subcommittees, you know, when we were talking about this, is, you know, the main committee, does that have representation from special ed? You know, AP, regular ed?
Yeah, that, that was exactly the discussion. And special ed was one of the shortfalls that we came up with during that organizational meeting. You know, we really need somebody from special ed here to chat about it. So, and it's gonna be, the idea is that each of these people on this core committee would be reaching out and pulling information or thoughts or anything from everybody in that demographic, so. We're trying to get as much reach as we can with this and be as, as visible as we can with the entire process.
And as representative of the different groups and the stakeholders, so that if we're gonna have students, we'll have students representing certain areas. We have parents representing certain areas, teachers representing certain things as well, to try to be representative for the general, but also, as Dawn mentioned, go into subcommittees beyond that to make sure that we're getting input from all of those groups and not just the people on the committee.
Yeah, so, anything else, Amy? Okay, thank you. Anything else, Paula? You good with that? Okay, so next we had the Performing Arts Center Advisory Committee. So Paula, do you have anything to share?
Yeah, I do, quite a bit, actually. So we have a great season planned. I'm not allowed to kind of give you the full details right now. However, I can tell you that we will be handing out, not handing out, mailing out the information after Labor Day. And we've got tons and tons of programming, national and regional shows. We stand to make about $60,000 this year, if all goes as planned. Hopefully, it does. And this includes, of course, rentals, sponsorships, and our regular programming. I can tell you that in December, we will have two Nutcracker Shows. The Portland Ballet is gonna come and do a matinee, and then they will also do an evening show, which is very exciting. In January, we are planning a piano festival. There's gonna be an interactive, interactive student concert on Friday after school. Then there's a piano trio. And then on Saturday, this is very exciting, Hannah Powell Memorial Piano Competition. So we'll have people competing, competing from age 15 to age 30. And we had a, a very, very generous donation, so we will be having prizes also, $1,000, $2,000. And it's all for, memorial for Hannah Powell, so just wanted to get that out there. And then on Sunday, we have Daniel Shu. He's gonna be performing as well. Homecoming weekend, we've got the Main Artisan and Crafters Festival. That's one of the things that we're planning for that weekend. Aside from that, if anybody wants to have some community service hours, or anybody who wants to volunteer, we are looking for volunteers, ushers, security, marketing, box office, high school kids, you do get community service hours. And we're also looking for sponsors, some sponsorships. So if there's any business out there that would like to help out the school and help out the program, and also get your name out there and just be even more part of a community, please let us know at spac@sanford.org. And that's it for now.
I'll put a plug in for volunteering. I've done it since it opened, and it's fun. It's a great group. Brett's always fun to hang out with. So if you've got some spare time, I recommend it. And you can usually catch most of the show that's going on at the same time, if not all of it, so. Okay, do we have anything for adult ed, Mr. Nelson?
No, just that the process is ongoing in terms of finding a replacement for Nicole Ivy. And hopefully, we'll be able to have some information that we can share at upcoming meeting to give an update on that, but that process is underway.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so superintendent's report. We've got all kinds of fun stuff on this.
Sure, so first off, as I mentioned at our last meeting, we have a new school resource officer at Sanford High School, Sanford Regional Technical Center, Paul Goldsmith. I had an opportunity to meet Paul and kind of get to know him better, and also discuss his background and also expectations for the position. And I mentioned that last time, and the school committee was hoping that we could have Paul come before us this evening. So they'd have an opportunity to kind of get to know Paul as well. So Paul, if you don't mind coming up to the podium and probably just gonna start off giving us a little bit of your background and why you're interested in the SRO position and kind of what you've been doing to this point, in terms of some of the training and kind of.
It's like, it's like you're giving him a little mini interview here, or put him on the spot.
Basically, it's all there for me. Members, I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and introduce myself, tell a little bit about myself. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah, gotcha.
So Paul Goldsmith, the new SRO School Resource Officer, assigned to the high school. I've been with Sanford Maine Police Department for seven years. During that time, I have done a number of community things, waited tables at Applebee's, for Special Olympics, certain things like that, just always kind of gone into the community. So that's basically, you know, that's kind of my take on getting into the school, is it's sort of a continuation of community service, in, in my opinion. So I've gone into that for exactly that reason. You know, it's, it's for the kids. I attended a week-long training at the Concord Criminal Justice Academy for NASRO. That was the School Resource Officer training. And I also did a week at the Criminal Justice Academy in Maine, for basically Maine's version of the, of the same training. So, so I've done that. So in the last month, I've had 80 hours of training to help assist me with, with the, the position. So that's basically it. I mean, I've always believed it takes a village to raise our kids, and I'm happy to be a part of that village and do what we gotta do. That's really about all I got.
Wait, I'll be, I'll say, welcome aboard, Paul. Hopefully, you enjoy it. I think Mr. Mapes was actually the one that wanted, really wanted to have you here, and he's not here tonight.
Oh, man.
So you might have to arrange a separate meeting with him.
I gotta do another speech or something just for him, I guess. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Okay, any questions or anything for Paul, anybody? All good. Hey, thanks, thanks again. Nice to see you. Okay, we got, what, new teacher orientation and in-service days update, Mr. Nelson?
Sure, so proud to announce that last week on Tuesday, we held our new teacher orientation day. A big thank you to all of our new teachers and staff who attended that day. Also, a big thank you to our curriculum director, Beth Lambert, and Assistant Superintendent Steve Bucier, as well as all of our staff mentors, all of our current teachers, to be able to come back because we've assigned a mentor to all of our new teachers. Just to look at some of the numbers that we have, we have, and I've mentioned all along, we've done a lot of hiring. We have 41 new teachers that we have replaced out of existing positions. And then we have another 31 teachers who we've added through the relief, the, the federal funds. And so when you look at it, we're talking over 70 people. And that is, that is kudos all around in terms of the hiring that's taken place. And that hiring goes all the way back to last spring, throughout the summer. And I am so impressed and so proud of the quality of candidates that we have. That's everyone from people who are coming to join our school department, from other school departments. It's also other people who at one time maybe left Sanford and want to return back to Sanford. We also have those people that are coming right out of college or right out of ETAP programs as well. We have people relocating to the state of Maine as well for that. We put a program together. There was a lot of great energy that helps orientate them to the Sanford School Department. And then we also will have the afternoon where they're able to spend time with their mentors. And we also have set up a, a six-week kind of course to be able to help our newbies also acclimate and have a successful transition to the Sanford School Department for that. So I just wanted to, with all that work that come down, all that success and all that energy, I just wanted to make sure we had time to mention that at tonight's meeting.
It's very exciting. Welcome everybody aboard. And I just got word that we're actually got sound live again, I believe, on all the platforms. So anybody that's now listening in, I would like to let you know that we did record the beginning part of the meeting on Zoom. As soon as we are done, we will get that posted as quickly as possible, so that you can catch up on any of those parts that you may have missed. So I just want to make sure everybody knew that. At least we didn't, we got it back in in time for the rest of the agenda. Okay, Superintendent Nelson, goal-setting workshop update?
Sure, we had something new that we haven't done, at least recently, was we had members of the school committee conduct a school committee workshop in conjunction with our A-team, our administrator team. And they came to our meeting on Wednesday, August 18th, where what we were doing on that day was really focusing on goal-setting for the upcoming year. We had an opportunity where we've kind of identified an overview goal, goals for the district in three areas. In the student achievement area, we're looking to have our schools meet students where they're at, and also create learning paths for them to be successful. Under the climate and culture pillar, we're looking at supporting the social, emotional well-being of students and staff. And then under the pillar of capacity building, trying to create structures to provide all staff with ongoing support and opportunities for professional growth. So at this workshop, we had opportunities where we were presenting our goals by schools and had an opportunity to, all of our schools, to go back and share those in terms of where they were, obviously. Those are goals that still need to be kind of finalized and flushed out, but it was great to have the school committee be able to hear that and also offer feedback and ask any questions regarding that. Because our hope is that our individual school goals and our individual teacher and staff goals will also align with the overall, that alignment, I think, is really important for us to make sure to be moving ahead as a district. So I did feel that was a very productive day. Amy and Paula and Jonathan were able to join us that day for that. I don't know if Paula and Amy have anything that they want to add, but I thought it was a very productive day.
Amy, Paula? Amy?
You know, I was, I left this, it was, it was many, I think it went a lot longer than everybody expected, because it was just so overwhelmingly, I mean, I've always known that every school was working so, so hard. But to hear, you know, I, I think I said to them, I wish that every family would hear what each school was doing and the extent of it, because, you know, I've got, every, every school gave us packets, and they went through everything about, you know, all of the ideas that they have and how they're gonna put it into place. And, you know, I, I really hope that all families can get the opportunity and, you know, hopefully hear from the principals in upcoming meetings, just so that they can get to experience what we got to hear about just all the hard work that they're doing. You know, last year, we started having Mr. Nelson give us little like updates of what each school was doing, but it, it honestly doesn't even touch the magnitude of what goals that they're setting for this upcoming school year to help with the kids, social, emotional, and trying to connect and make strong connections with not just the students, but with the peers. And it was just, it was wonderful. I was so glad to have gone.
Glowing endorsement, Amy. Paula, you know, I had nothing to say after that?
Well said. I mean, yeah, it was, it was wonderful to just have a chance to see every school how they're planning for the year and their vision for, it's not just for this next year, but where the district is gonna go in the, you know, foreseeable future. And to see how hard everybody's working to make it consistent across the board, and the thought, how thoughtful about every aspect of teaching and every aspect of, of our kids. It was just really great.
And I'll just add that you, you do a lot of this work, and then school starts, and then sometimes, if you're not careful, you get caught up in the day-to-day life, and it gets put to the side. That's something that for us as an administrative team, this is something that we're periodically gonna be checking in through the year to kind of get an idea about where we are with those goals and how we're doing, so that that can be ongoing work. So that there may be some things that we have to adjust or change or adapt along the way, but that's something that we can do.
Excellent. I always think it's great to be on the same page. Okay, so now let's get to, one of the big agenda items is the update on the Safe Return to School and Continuity of Instruction Plan.
Sure, so as was mentioned at the last meeting, when that was presented, and the school committee approved that plan, one of the things that was identified was, this is something that's gonna be ongoing for us. So we want to make sure that it becomes a regular agenda item, so we can get those updates throughout. It's hard to give any updates, I think, right now, in the sense that we've just had one day of school. We did have open house last Thursday. I know that if I was getting out into the buildings, both last Thursday and today, I can't tell you how happy I am to see kids back and the energy that people are bringing every day. I wish we didn't have to have the face coverings on, but we have people that are back. And remember, the really driving force behind all of this is really so that we can have our kids in school five days a week, in-person learning. We know that that is what works and what is best. That is so important for us, and if that's something that we're gonna be able to try to, for us to navigate to do that. One of the things that came out of last, the last meeting we had was, okay, the face coverings are here, but what is gonna be some of those things that we're gonna be able to look at down the line to say, if we make the decision to pull back on that requirement, to make it be a recommendation? And so we were trying to, one of the things I've done is tried to have some of the metrics that we can be able to look at. I've reached out to the Maine Department of Education. I've reached out to the York County Superintendent's Association, the Maine State Superintendent's Association. I've reached out to York County Emergency Services, also working closely with City Manager Steve Buck in terms of what we can do, because at the end of the day, this is not gonna be, I don't expect this to be a decision that is made by the Maine Department of Education, or made by the CDC or the DHS. Right now, they have weighed in that the strong recommendation is that you have face coverings while you are at school. And so I think it's gonna be a local decision for that. And so one of the things that I've done is started to go back and look at, what are some of those metrics? And currently, working for both York County and working for Sanford, because I think what you're gonna find is community prevalence is gonna be the leading metric for that. The vaccination rate by zip code for Sanford, that's 84%, and for Springvale, that's 83%. That's pretty good, but I also want to caution people that we have at least 2,000, if not more, residents remaining also to be unvaccinated. Also, you may notice that the DHS and the Maine Department of Education is using a dashboard now where they are listing the rate, the vaccination rates for students. And so they have put that out there. And for Sanford, when we look at what are students who are eligible for the vaccine, 12 years and older, and how many students that we had registered in our NEO system, according to the Department of Education, we land at about 45, between 45 and 49% of our students, eligible students, being vaccinated for that. That's data on the number of youth ages 12 to 18 who have received at least one dose of the vaccination for that, as far as what was reported through August 23rd for that. There are some potential exclusions there on that data for that. As I mentioned, it comes from the MDOE data for the ones that we were financially responsible for, going back to June 2022. back to June 2021 for that. And I do want to put the qualifier out that these are only estimates of the vaccination rate, given the different sources and limitations of the data. I do know that probably if you look at those percentages, they are low. We'd like to have those percentages higher. So we do have some upcoming vaccination clinics. At Sanford High School and Sanford Regional Technical Center, we have vaccination clinics scheduled for September 24th and October 15th. And then for Sanford Middle School Vaccination Clinic on September 22nd and October 13th. Those are, if you remember, we did vaccination clinics last spring towards the end of the school year when that was approved. So those are some upcoming for that. One of the things we also are going to be reporting out on through the dashboard is the staff vaccination rates by school department. And so we have to have that information reported to the Department of Education and we will be doing that soon as a final. Right now, I can give you an update of where we are on those estimated staff vaccination rates. We've identified 557 total staff. We've had 438 respondents to date and we have a vaccination rate of just under 90%, 89.7% of the staff are being vaccinated for those 438 of the people who have responded for that. Looking ahead to some of the other data that's around today for York County, the total number of cases, COVID cases, has been 14,664. The estimated active cases are 520. There've been 143 deaths, 416 hospitalizations, and the full vaccination rate for York County is 61.74%. Also, I've reached out, or rather, the city manager on our behalf has reached out to see if we can also, I can be shared the main health dashboard also that tracks what's going on in, related to COVID. I also reached out to the school physician, the hospital that we contract with at York Hospital for that, to get her thoughts. And she said that with the current York County positivity rate of over 5% and understand that that is over double than what was the start of last year's school year at this time, and how it's been rising since the middle of July. She continues to recommend and mandate universal masking for all K through 12 students and staff. She also warns to be wary of disinformation and sources that are not validated or relevant to COVID. And she points out that the data is always changing. And so trying to do our best and her best to use reliable sources, both through the federal and the main CDC, to gather the current information and apply to recommendations for that. As reflected in the recent data, vaccines are still excellent at preventing hospitalization and death. However, there is now evidence of reduced protection against mild disease. And so therefore breakthrough infections in teachers and staff will occur. And as I mentioned, we reached out to her initially, to York Hospital for their thoughts and their strong recommendation to require the masking. The analogy that she uses for that was not to just prevent quarantines, but also use it as a transmission mitigation strategy. And she used the example of like seat belts. We wear seat belts and put our children in car seats, not just to avoid, you know, to follow the law, but to also use them to prevent injury and death with that. Also, I want to point out that York County currently falls in the high level of community transmission and therefore the CDC recommends universal masking indoors regardless of vaccination status. And also the rate is higher, our rate in York County is higher than the overall state rate. That was, as I mentioned, back at the beginning of last school year for that with it. Also, she points out that vaccines may be available for those under 12, optimistically as early as this December, in terms of also something to consider then if we're going to be looking at policy. And the York County Emergency Management situation, I do get a Monday through Friday, I do get an update. As I mentioned, the community transmission in York County is high. The positivity rate today was at 5.24% for that. And so there's everything that we'll come back and show the case rates and the vaccinations through the different information that we have. And that's something that we'll be able to come back and be able to track. So those are some of the things that right now, as far as looking at for us, different metrics that we're going to want to consider. I wanted to share that with the school committee and get your thoughts in terms of feedback or any other ideas or suggestions in terms of things that we're going to want to be able to continue to monitor.
Gotcha. So thanks, Matt. I think that's a good little glimpse into how much effort and time you and your team put into this as far as gathering information, looking at stuff. I don't know if Grace and Bella wanted to like make any comments about this since you did actually come here. You really didn't have to. It's not in the school year yet quite, but we appreciate your input all the time.
Hello, everyone. I mean, honestly, I, as a lot of parents are, are just thankful, like my brother, my third grader brother has been counting down the days to go to school. And so he went to school today and he was like, you're not lucky because you have one more day of summer and you have to go to school tomorrow. And I was like, yeah, you're right. You're right. And so I know everybody's just so excited to be back in school and I really just want to, you know, keep it safe so that we can go to school because I don't want to do virtual learning again. I really want to, you know, be out and see people and like talk to people. As far as like, I know, so I came from field hockey. Grace came from volleyball. We're all really trying really hard to like when we have to go in the building to wear masks, when we're outside on the field, we're staying three feet apart outside. And so I know we all really want to try to make it work.
Thanks, Bella. Anything to add, Grace?
I think the only thing that I want to say is that like, I know nobody likes the masks, but if that's what I have to do in order to have the most normal high school senior year experience, then I'm willing to sacrifice wearing and like, I'm willing to wear a mask if that means that I can do normal things. And I think in the end, it's all about choices. So if you choose not to wear a mask, then that means you're choosing not to participate or have these certain activities. But since I'm willing to wear a mask, that means that I would like to just do my best to try and have a normal experience. So it's all about choices.
Great. Thanks, Grace. I should probably have you guys speak after us because you sound so much better than we do whenever we say stuff. Lieutenant Nelson?
Yeah, I do want to point out too that today with the first day of school, we do, we have been made aware of some positive cases, positive COVID cases already. We have some at Sanford Regional Technical Center and at Carl J. Lamb School. We are currently investigating those and notifying the close contacts. It's a combination of, there's probably some of those are breakthrough cases in some situations, and there are also other situations where people were not vaccinated with that. So we are in the process of putting together that notification to be able to push that out because we will continue to make sure that we are sharing that information so that people are aware of that. And that would be another metric for us, I think, as well, for us to be able to see. Last year, I was proud of, even with the positive COVID cases that we had, we were able to not have any transmission in, in school. And so that's going to be hopefully one of our goals again this year and also the, one of the ideas for us to be able to continue with the face coverings.
Exactly. John? Yeah, I just got a quick question. Matt, with this in, first of all, thank you for getting this information to us in a snapshot. I really do appreciate it. And the other thing I like about the information you're giving us, you are reaching out to our physicians at York Hospital. That's really good information for me to have and I think for a lot of the parents to have, to see that it's just not, the school board, the CDC, it's coming directly from our, from York Hospital who is working with us. My other question on this is, how often do you want to do, you know, will this be like a construction update moving forward, something that we have every couple of weeks? Are you thinking, just giving a snapshot of where we are, more about statistics, not about what we're going to do? Is that something you want to do or the school committee wants to do?
I think I, those are, we get those reports Monday through Friday. And so one of the things is, I want to be able to use those to kind of be tracking those over time to see where we're trending. I think that can be something to be able to show that. And right now, we're not trending, we're trending in the wrong, the wrong direction. But that's will be something that I will be using that we've not had those before, but we're reaching out to York County. I talked to Art Cleaves and Art is now providing that, not just the Sanford School Department, but he's doing that to all the schools in York County because they also have similar situations that they're looking for because we would like to be able to get to a point where we can safely take the face coverings off.
Gotcha. Did you have anything, Amy? I thought I saw you going for it when John cut you off earlier.
No, no. Well, I had actually seen the report because I stared at it and read it a lot today. So I had seen it. So, but I thank you for bringing it to all of us, Matt. You know, to me, COVID is real. I take care of COVID kids. We, you know, we had, I think, I feel like I said my P's and Q last week. We voted, the vote went for mask mandate. And I feel like moving forward, we just need to kind of, as a school committee, you know, kind of just be constantly checking on this in the sense of, it, it still feels strong that we need to have kind of our own parameters that aren't, you know, steadfast, that we can say, you know what, we're starting to close, you know, it's starting to lower, you know, because, you know, we are, York County is a population of over 202,000 people. Sanford has got over 24,000 people. And so, you know, point of the five, it's 5%, right? So I just feel like we need to be thoughtful and, and let the community know because I do in hindsight feel like we should have done a survey for staff and for families. I feel like that would have been helpful because I do feel like the community is split. You know, before the last meeting, I had had many staff come up to me that felt parent choice was where they wanted it to go. They may feel differently now, but, and I've had many staff that have come up to me at the grocery store or wherever, that definitely feel very nervous and are very comfortable with the mask because they want the mask to continue. I think that just, we just, I don't know, I don't want to just keep repeating myself, but I feel like having us, the school committee have a meeting and kind of just really kind of looking at what numbers are we looking at? Because I think it would be very helpful, you know, when we, we, the, we, the difficult decision in some ways back in the spring about putting the kids back in school, I feel like for some people, it kind of came from left field. And I feel like the more we're talking about it, that the goal is for masks to come off when we feel, when the entire school committee feels like it is safe, that it's not, it's, it's going to be discussed and discussed and discussed. Does that make sense?
Can I follow you, Amy? Okay. I just actually made a note of that for future agenda possible stuff. Paula, anything you want to add to the conversation? Questions for Matt? Random thoughts?
I guess the thought that always comes up is, yes, COVID is real. Yes, we need to vaccinate and there's many different reasons why people don't want to vaccinate right now. So my concern is that we need to have protocols in place or we need to at least be very thoughtful. Our goal is to continue to have as many students as possible in the school. How are we going to make sure that we reduce as much as possible the chance of quarantining and shutting down? And not just the classroom, but all sports events, theater events, music events, band events, all of those things. And so, and making sure that the information or the, the metrics is with which we decide how many kids are going to be quarantined versus how many don't have to, or do we have to shut down the whole football team? Or do we have to shut down, you know, a theater performance? That it's clear for everybody, not just for us as a school board, but for parents and for the community as a whole, and that it is consistent across the board so that there aren't, so that if there's any, there aren't the miscommunications or sort of the miscommunication that is out there that then leads to further division between everybody.
Excellent points, Paula, as always. Okay, anything else from anybody? Okay, we'll move on then. Next, we have directors' reports and we have athletic director Gordy Salz up first with the fall sports update. I believe he's on Zoom, Beth? Bring him up. Do we have like a hologram of him popping up? Is that how this works now?
I can put the video up. I mean, if that's what they want.
Hey, Gordy, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. It's always a pleasure to be able to speak before the school board. We're really early into the fall season, so I'll share as much as I can for what we've done. I'd like to go back and start in the summer because it felt like the summer was really important to provide a lot of opportunity for our kids to try to reclaim them and to prove to them that we were going to have the opportunity to play at, at a normal pace and do some of the normal things that we always have athletically. So I was really happy with the coaching staff, boys and girls soccer, boys and girls basketball, football, wrestling, cross country, field hockey, baseball, girls and boys lacrosse and volleyball and track. All had pretty good summers and offered programs for kids to come and start participating again and start getting back into a shape that would carry them into the beginning of the preseason. Very happy that we're able again this year to provide a free program, Speed Camp, run by the Sports Medicine Performance Center from Southern Maine Healthcare. Again, it was a free program. We had about 365 kids. There's a lot of them multiple, multiple, we saw the kids multiple times. We ran twice, twice a week and, and in that, those two days, every day for those two days, we'd have about 75 kids. They got to work on their flexibility, agility, strength and conditioning, run by our athletic trainers and some more people from the Sports Performance Center. So we're really happy that happened this summer and we were able to provide that for the kids as a precursor to the fall season. Obviously, we've started the fall season August 16th. Our numbers are right now about 235 kids. We're down in a couple of areas, but has more to do that there were smaller classes coming through and with participation in a couple of those sports, more than they had to do with kids returning from COVID. Our games start this Thursday. Field hockey's home. And then we're off and running for the rest of the fall. Homecoming will be the week of September 27th to October 1st with the field hockey game on Monday, the 27th, girls soccer Tuesday, the 28th, and volleyball also Tuesday, the 28th, with boys soccer the 30th, and the football game Friday night, October 1st, with the Saturday homecoming dance. So pretty exciting that we're going to be able to offer that, especially after last year and a half and kids being able to do all the things that anybody's experienced. Stanford's homecoming, it's really done very well. The kids are awesome and creates a lot of excitement for our community. And I know this year, the Alumni Association and Legacy have provided some other things during that week that will hopefully engage alumni and more people from the community here on this campus. hopefully engage, uh, alumni and more people from the community here on this campus. Our Fall Awards banquet is scheduled for November third at six PM in the Performing Arts Center. Um, we started doing that when we were able to move to the new school. It's been a, uh, a very well received thing from the parents and the kids where everybody's there, gets to see everybody get their awards. Um, major awards, and then they break up and go into separate rooms for their individual awards. Um, so, uh, I feel pretty good about that banquet and how it's run. And the, the opportunity for everybody to see kids get their awards. A lot of our kids win the game start, don't get to see each other, uh, in their games and competition, but at the end of, and that we could culminate with the banquet, it, it makes for, uh, a, a great way to end that sports season. Um, um, this past Sunday, August twenty-second, the tennis courts were named after a longtime coach and, uh, longtime coach and, uh, committee, committee, a million committees and obviously Roland Cody has been in this community for a long time, been a, a good leader in a lot of areas besides the athletic, um, venues, but, uh, so the legacy, uh, noticed, uh, recognized him this past Sunday, uh, August twenty-second. So out there now, uh, those courts will now be known as the Roland Cody Tennis Courts, which, uh, I thought was very cool. And, uh, about thirty people came in to watch that ceremony and, uh, very, Roland was very touched and I'm very happy for Roland in that, that was, um, done. Uh, we talked a lot about COVID tonight. As far as athletics and COVID, we are following general recommend, recommendations in, for indoor and outdoor athletic activities from the MPA, the Maine CDC, the Maine Athletic Trainers Association, the Department of Education. Coaches are following previous protocols in regards to practice and games. They're doing daily attendance and screening inside. If you're inside the building, you have to wear a mask. As you heard tonight from two of our athletes, they're willing to do those types of things to be able to experience a normal season. And I'll tell you, so far, the kids have just been tremendous. Coaches are working really hard and doing a good job making sure we're following the protocols that we have. And, uh, in the end, unfortunately, if there's a positive case, and people need to understand that there's a gradual and progressive return to play, uh, and physical exertion. So if you have a positive case, you just can't come off and start pri, practice in full bore again. There is a, a progressive return to play that we have to follow. And, uh, so, uh, sometimes that gets missed in the, in all the information that parents and kids get, but there is like any other injury, there's a return to play protocol. Um, again, I'd like to thank the, the student athletes and the coaches. They're very happy to be out there playing. Um, and we're very happy to be able to provide a positive outlet for our kids' emotional, social wellbeing. I think it's extremely important that as we move forward, that we're doing everything we can to make sure, uh, the kids', um, social, emotional wellbeing, taking care of whether it's in the classroom or out in the athletic fields or the band or in, in the Performing Arts Center. Um, challenges, um, busing is a major challenge right now. Enough help to run games. And obviously, when COVID hits and close contacts, those are very challenging times for our athletic trainers and nurse, myself and the coaches. Um, we're doing the best job that we can to provide all the information that we have at the current time. Um, it does constantly change, which makes it a little difficult to stay on top of, but we're doing the best we can and appreciate the parents' patience with that. And that's all I have. And if there's any questions, we'd be glad to answer. Uh, I have Jesse and Aaron, athletic trainers here. In cases, a medical question that they would be able to answer more complete than I would.
Okay. Well, hey, first of all, good work as always, Gordy. We appreciate it. Um, and hey, thanks for bringing up the, uh, the dedication of the tennis courts. Uh, in case anybody missed that, it was dedicated to, uh, Roland Cody. And I was lucky enough to be down there for the ceremony. It was, uh, Mr. Rue and of course, uh, Paula here. You had to be there, right? And, uh, Superintendent Nelson was in attendance as well. And it was really nice. I actually got a little choked up, but Roland was actually fairly, fairly short with his acceptance speech, which was very uncharacteristic of him. Uh, okay. So does anybody have, uh, questions, comments for Gordy? Amy?
It's, it's more of a comment. Um, Gordy, uh, you know, please tell the staff, um, the coaches and the trainers, um, how much I know that my children, um, appreciated the summer programming, um, with the athletics. It definitely, um, when you talked, when you touched upon, I think, I was having a hard time hearing you. I don't know if anybody else was. Maybe I'm just going deaf. Um, but you know, it definitely helped with, you know, when you were saying the social, emotional and wellbeing, I think getting back into shape, exercising, bringing that all back, which many of the kids had just kind of stopped doing during COVID, let's be honest. Um, so I think it was really good for all of them. I'm excited to hear that there's two hundred and thirty-five kids. Um, and that's, you know, and I'm hoping that they have more at the, at the middle school level when that starts back up, which my understanding is the middle school sports are starting back up next week is what I thought I read. Um, do you want to clarify that?
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, middle, middle school athletics will start, uh, this week, uh, at some level, but start really going next week. So there'll be added numbers to that, uh, boys and girls soccer, cross country, uh, field hockey. And so there'll be more numbers added to that. We're just, uh, doing the signups this week. So we're just getting at that right now.
Awesome. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Hey, anybody else? Paula? No, all good. Oh, wait. Do you have a question, Jen? I might allow it. Let me know what the question is first.
I can't hear.
Oh, just for sports? Okay. Um, so Jen Davies in the audience is asking if as a parent, you could sign up to be a bus driver just for athletics and not driving during the day? And I think Steve is our guy to answer this question because he knows everything there is to know about transportation.
I don't know if I'd say that.
It's actually a nice segue, Jen. Did they set you up for this segue? Cause we're talking about the transportation stuff next.
Uh, the answer to that question is yes. Um, they are looking for drivers. You do not have to work, work full-time for them. You can be a substitute driver. You could, um, drive um, just for athletic events or sporting events, uh, music events. Um, you do not have to ride, um, the full gamut.
Yeah, yeah. Also, hey, along those lines, Steve, how difficult is it to get the dri, the license to be a bus driver? I mean, is it super complicated? Is, I mean, if people are maybe afraid to do it?
It does, it does. It is a process. You have to take a written test. And once you do the written test, you have to take the permit and then you have to practice. And then you have to go and perform your drive the bus. And so it does take, um, some time. Um, through COVID, it's been especially difficult in getting those road tests scheduled. People are getting their permits, but it's getting that road test scheduled. Right now, they have, um, two drivers that are looking to get their licenses. They have their permits to just in the queue to be tested. And, and, um, one of them is late September and the other one doesn't have a date back yet. So, um, it is a process, but definitely, uh, we are definitely looking for drivers, um, also looking for monitors. And so I'll talk a little bit about that, uh, towards the end of my report.
Can I just ask one question though?
Yeah.
So do you need your CDL license? And is that what you're referring to when you say the license to CDL?
Okay. Good evening. Um, it was great to be back at school today. I was out in the school buildings. It was great to see kids and staff back, really a lot of smiling faces. And, um, it was really great to see. For the first time, um, the middle school was open and we had over nine hundred students at the middle school. And at Pride School, we had almost three hundred students in attendance today and we'll welcome kindergarten, um, on Wednesday. So the goal for transportation, uh, the first week of school is to make sure we get everybody to school, um, safely. And then we get everybody home safely. Uh, today, we accomplished that goal, um, of getting everybody to school and to home safely. Um, we appreciate families' patience, um, with timing as students, staff and drivers get used to the new routine. And like I mentioned earlier, we have to keep in mind, this is the first time we've had Pride School at full capacity. First time we've had the middle school at full capacity. So it, it's really been a learning experience for the drivers um, and students. Some of students have not, uh, driven the bus for almost two years now. And so with that, um, I'm pretty proud of what we did today. We have some hiccups, um, but we'll work those out. Keep in mind, we opened school today, but tomorrow we welcome back our, uh, tenth through twelfth graders. And then on Wednesday, we'll welcome back kindergartners. And on Thursday, we have a second run with kindergartners. With that being said, we are going to have delays in busing over the next week. Um, due to the various start times of individuals. And then we go on vacation. So what's going to happen on vacation? Those kindergartners that had everything down, by the time they left on Thursday, they're going to come back. And we'll be back at it on Tuesday, but we, we do understand the biggest thing is time and we will work on getting those times down as we move forward. I'd like to say, um, should have started with this, like to say thank you to a couple of folks tonight in regards to transportation. First of all, our administrative assistants over the summer who spent, um, countless hours updating addresses. We've had students move in, we've had students move out, and all that information is important and critical as we plan our routes. So thank you to our administrative assistants. Also, thank you to Legmere Transportation, both, um, Kevin Banfield and Rose Dunn, um, and Monique. Um, they worked tirelessly over the summer in conjunction with our administrative assistants to make sure that data was accurate. Um, and just so, thank you to those folks. Um, new this year, we did print the routes out, um, on our website, like we've traditionally done in the past. Um, but we also provided parents with an e-link, um, through Versatrans where parents could use their, um, student's ID number to find out the exact information for bus stops. Um, we sent that out after the, um, paper, the newsprint, uh, for a reason. Um, because we wanted to make sure that parents had something they were familiar with first, before we sent that Versatrans e-link out. So that was intentional on our part. But there was really, there's really power behind that because anybody in the school system has access to that Versatrans system, which provides them with the ability to look up a student's bus information and relay it to the parent on the phone. So administrative assistant on the other end can look at the information and relay it to the parent on the phone, and it's real time. There, we've cut out that middle man of having to call the bus company. Um, so I'm really hopeful in the future that'll be a beneficial system. I think, um, so far, so good with that. Safe Stop, Safe Stop, the Legmere is working on getting that up and running. Um, I will have an update for you at our next meeting, um, with that. Okay, we talked about this shortage of bus drivers and monitors. We are having significant shortages with our bus drivers and monitors. In terms of our regular, why are we here today? Um, Legmere has been advertising, they've been offered a fifteen thousand, fifteen hundred dollar signing bonus. So fifteen thousand.
I was just about to throw my hat in the ring there. I was ready to go.
It'd be quite a bit. Um, they have, they have offered a signing, signing on bonus of fifteen hundred. Um, they had been fully staffed, um, coming up in August. In, in August, they, they have lost two drivers um, that have gone to work for other companies in full-time employment. And when I say full-time employment, the more of the six to three positions, um, that they couldn't, they couldn't give up. Um, and so we've had to do some scrambling. We've had to combine two routes, um, into our current existing routes. Um, they have been creative with, um, scheduling and trying to limit that capacity on the bus. They're doing the best they can. Um, just this morning, we did send a message out to parents, um, on Friday, just making them aware. Um, be prepared in the case that we have an emergency, um, transportation situation that happens. This morning, we had one where the monitor of one of our vans, monitor was out sick. And so we have one student that we transport to a location. So that parent, I had to call the parent up this, this morning and say, here's the situation. How are we going to proceed? So just be prepared for that. Um, with that, we're going to try to do our best to eliminate disruptions, but I can see we may have some. Um, so they are looking for, we have, um, they're looking for drivers, monitors. If you're interested, call Legmere, we'll get you set up. Like I mentioned before, they're looking for after-school trips. If there's retired folks out there who are interested, you get to watch the game for free. Um, it's, it's a good, a good time if that interests you. Now, athletics is a major piece where we're running into some difficulties. Um, we've reached out to the Southern Maine Administrative Collaborative to try and see if they can help us out with covering some of those athletic routes. Um, and so hopefully we'll help back from them, that they'll be able to do that. Keep our fingers crossed. And so to be continued with transportation. Anybody have any questions? Yeah, Amy?
When you mentioned the monitors, what is there? I know the drivers need, you know, the CDC, CDL license, but for the monitors, what is the requirements for that?
Monitor, monitors, um, they just have to have training through Legmere.
Okay.
Yeah. It's less involved.
It's a pretty quick turnaround if people are like, oh, you know what, I could do that.
And oftentimes what they do, if they have somebody who's interested, they get them in as a monitor. And they use them as a monitor until, until they get their license to get them on the road.
And can those be part-time as well or per diem?
Yep. Yep.
Uh, Steve, I just had a quick comment, um, to any of the parents that are out there. Yes, school is now open. I got behind a bus on my way into work today and which really made me a little late. And then I had a dentist appointment. And I got behind a bus again and I was late for that appointment. So folks out there, buses are running.
Yes, buses are running. And just to add to that, the, the, it, it's everywhere. The, the, the shortage of labor is everywhere. If you're planning on going to Dunkin' Donuts and you're a school teacher, you may want to double think that plan in the morning because the line at Dunkin' Donuts this morning, we can't, it was, it was long, it was long, so. Um, pool testing, update you on pool testing?
Steve, just a sec. We had a great, uh, question from Grace real quick.
Uh, yeah, I was just wondering, like, when you say monitors on the bus, like, what does that job, like, entail? So what do they do?
So monitors are on our small buses. Our large buses, we usually, for the most part, don't have monitors on those buses. The, the monitors on the small buses, people who ride our small buses are also oftentimes students that have, um, need accommodations. And so the monitors help, they help get the students in the seat, they help buckle them in, they monitor behaviors, they monitor, sometimes have to monitor for health symptoms. Um, and they help out the drivers.
Good question, Grace. Okay, Steve, carry on.
Um, pool testing, just an update on pool testing. We have applied for pool testing, um, through the DOE. Pool testing is going to be done by a third-party, um, vendor named Concentric out of Massachusetts. They have reached back out to us, um, and they've asked for some information, like how many schools we have, number of students, staff, contacts. Um, and one of the questions they asked of the school department is what we are looking for to accomplish pool testing. And so we have requested a, um, sort of someone to oversee the process. And we've also asked for support to actually conduct the testing within our schools. Um, and so we're waiting to hear back from them about next steps. Once we hear back from them, um, we plan on having a informational night for parents. I would imagine it be through Zoom. That way, just to give, um, allow more people an opportunity to access. Um, we'll do the parent night. We'll send out the information for parent, for kids to be able to register. It will be voluntary, voluntary, um, online. Parents can sign up and then we will be able to begin testing. So as soon as we have a date, I will let this committee know. And we'll get that out to parents. Um, we, um, part of the pool testing is to have the rapid testing that we have in our schools currently. Um, the binax now testing, you may have heard that we have that capability in our school. Um, we have that already set up. We've done the waiver through the state, so that process has already been done for us. So I expect, once, um, they reach out to us, I expect us to be, um, moving forward in a rather quick, quick manner. Um, I know Portland is starting, Portland is like the thirteenth, I saw, so school districts are rolling out. Um, and so we won't be the first, but I, I, I'm, I'm excited about, uh, the opportunity and see where it takes us. So, any questions about pool testing?
I do. Um, is there a thought of maybe starting with athletics? Um, just to kind of start with a smaller pool before going into the, I guess, and just see how that works?
I think there's, I think that's part of the question when we speak to the representative from, um, the company about whether we start with a, a small group to see that our feet wet. But our plan is to, is to offer in all our schools. And the plan is to, uh, you, once you're tested in a pool, you don't necessarily need to be retested um, with that. So we'll see what the company recommends as we, as we roll it out. But we've tossed around ideas, you know, do we start with athletics? Do we? So we'll see once we get more guidance from them.
I, I would, I mean, as a, as a mom who has two kids, um, playing high school sports, and I have one in the junior high, I, I, you know, knowing about, um, the football team and just, I think that it, it may be just something.
I, I, you know, knowing about the football team and just, I think that it, it may be just something that's kind of there as an added tool that I think will help. So I, I mean, I would definitely be supportive of that for sure.
Any other questions? Okay, anything else, Steve?
Nope, I'll come back for policies, what everybody's waiting for.
Oh, policies, that's what everybody's really waiting for. Okay, Beth, you're up.
Hello, everyone. So we finally wrapped up summer professional development last Tuesday when we had our mentors come in and do some training before they met with their new teachers later on that day. So I just wanted to come in and give you a brief update about what, what happened over the summer. So over 200 staff took advantage of over 235 hours of PB that was available over the summer, which was actually a little pared down from last summer. Our thought process was people needed a little bit of a break. So we tried to keep it in the month of August to give them June and July off to kind of regroup. But some of the topics that we offered were social, emotional work, both in curriculum as well as planning, math training for our new reveal math program, book study on differentiation at the middle and high school level. We also had special training days just for our brand-new teachers around math and our reading and writing curriculum that was provided by our coaches. Joan offered about three Promethean trainings primarily for the staff at Pride, but she also opened it up to anybody who was new for the middle school, high school. And Margaret Chase Smith, that might be new to the district and have never used Promethean, so they got to join as well. We had, the high school did some work with diversity. We had some meetings on culture and climate. Kristi Richards did a nice presentation on working with disengaged students at the elementary level. She also worked with our brand-new support and transition staff, now that we have them across every school. She met with them to, to start training and to work on procedures and expectations so that there's some consistency across the schools. We had Read 180 training for our special ed staff at the middle school as they're getting ready to implement that as part of one of the pieces of their instruction. Again, we had mentor training and we also had a week-long phonics training for our K-2 teachers as well as a week-long small group instruction for our K-6 teachers. So those are some of the highlights. We had a few other book groups and small pieces in there as well. But I think overall, it went really well and teachers were really happy with what was offered. Any questions?
Great work as always, Beth. Questions from anybody up here? No?
Thank you.
Was it nice to not just be working on building an entire remote learning system versus last summer?
It was very, very nice, yes. Not gonna lie.
Okay, so that's it for directors' reports. New business, I see none. Old business, I see none. Resignations, Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, I'd like to announce the following resignations. Brenda Cole from a literacy ed tech two position, that was actually withdrawn before she even started. Lori Coleman also withdrew her elementary school counselor position. Katrina Covey, she withdrew a food service position to work as an ed tech for us. Ed Daly has retired as a special education teacher at Sanford High School. Jordan Golden resigned as a special ed tech two at the middle school. Morgan Landry, special education ed tech two at CJL. Bruce Lappam as a freshman football coach. Cassandra Minke, second shift custodian. And also Val West, resigning as a science teacher at the high school to take an administrative position at a school in New Hampshire.
Best of luck to all those folks. Sure, go right ahead, Bella.
Yeah, I just want to thank Ms. West because I had her for AP Bio, me and Grace did. And she is a wonderful, loving, very kind teacher, and we will miss her a lot.
Very nice, Bella. Thanks. You can go visit her in New Hampshire, apparently, if you want to track her down. Okay, next we have staff appointments, Mr. Nelson.
Yeah, I'd announce the following. For, there's, some of these are replacements and some of these are also new positions that we're using the federal ESER funds to be able to support. So we have Andrea Baldwin, library ed tech one at the high school. That will be through ESER funds. Caleb Blakeney, special education ed tech two replacement at the Carl J. Lamb. Katrina Covey, special ed tech, special education ed tech one at the middle school as a replacement. Sarah Deschambault, certification committee member for MCS. Danielle Galant, ESER for food service. Melissa Gold, ed tech two kindergarten literacy at Pride. Troy Hathaway, also a certification committee member for the high school and SRTC. Linda Giracam, ed tech three math interventionist at Sanford Middle School with ESER funds. Pat Kaplowitz, special education ed tech two at MCS. Beth Laterno as K through 12 director of school counseling through ESER funds. Danielle Little, special education ed tech two at MCS for replacement. Carrie Martin, CJL food service replacement. Cynthia Mello, special education ed tech two replacement at the middle school. Krista Merrill, food service at MCS in a new position. Kim Minchin, certific, certification committee member for CJL. Christina Murphy, new food service position at MCS. Jen Scremon, the K through four school counselor, grade level leader for the elementary with ESER funds. Katie Spulick, food service pride in a replacement position. Carol Turgeon, special education tech, ed tech two at CJL. Sarah Vashon, food service at Pride. And Ashley Wyman as a grade seventh field hockey coach at the middle school.
And welcome aboard to all those folks, or congrats on your promotion or shift depending. Staff transfers, Mr. Nelson?
I'll announce the following transfers. Jessie Leir from a grade three teacher at MCS to the library specialist at MCS. Jerry Carlson from the Memorial Gym Flex Custodian to the high school Performing Arts Center Flex Custodian at the high school and, and SRTC. Sarah Coffin from the high school food service in terms of an increase in hours. Atholun Eaton, special ed tech three at MCS, moving over to a special education ed tech three at the middle school. Jen Merrill, moving from MCS, special education ed tech two over to CJL. Also is a special education ed tech two. And Sean Rowe, moving from second shift custodian to special education ed tech one at the middle school.
Excellent. And staff nominations?
Yep, these, we've already issued contracts to these people. And so Anna Aloco, Spanish teacher at the high school. Adam Booker, grade eight teacher at the middle school. Sarah Crabtree, grade six teacher at the middle school. Nicola Donatelli, special education teacher at the middle school. Melissa Hefnecker, science teacher at the high school. Joseph Masix, grade eight teacher at the middle school. Jen Murphy, grade three teacher at MCS. Brianna Snyder, special education teacher CJL. And Delaney Townsend, social work at MCS. It didn't make the agenda when we sent it out, but I'm also happy to announce that we've hired a plumbing teacher at SRTC. And I'll announce that at our, formally, at our next meeting.
Excellent, thank you. Welcome aboard to all those folks. And I think that's the last round where you get to do it without our approval, right, Matt? Your, your unilateral power is over for the summer.
I think I still've got tomorrow.
You gonna slide one in tomorrow? Amy?
Can I just ask you, Matt, I, I, it kind of went through and I didn't think about it till I was like looking at them again. And with the school counselor for the elementary schools, that position was to be through the kindergarten and first grade, correct? To be in addition to, just to kind of help with the social, emotional with other little ones and all that? Where, like, what does that mean? Is anyone not, is, is there a replacement or am I missing?
We've advertised the position and I'll let Mr. Busier give an update on kind of where we're at right now with that position.
We advertised the position. We interviewed a candidate. We are working, we have a couple of options and we're continuing to look for a candidate to fill that position. Our intent to have it primarily work with K and one students is still the intent. And so hopefully, by the time we have our next meeting, we'll have a candidate ready to roll.
And that's really classroom-based, right? There's, that's a position identifying kindergarten and first grade to really take, focus on that social, emotional piece. So there's a lot of classroom guidance there that will, it's, it's connected to that.
Excellent, thanks. Good question, Amy. Okay, so that would be it for staff nominations. Policies and procedures?
Okay, we have a second reading tonight for policy BED, remote participation in school committee meetings. Policy BED is proposed to define the circumstances under which remote participation is allowable for school committee meetings. This is a new policy based on MSMA's sample policy and the city's recently drafted policy surrounding remote participation for city council meetings. Based on input from the August 11th, 2021 school committee meeting, the third paragraph of the proposed policy has modified to include the phrase, "when technology is available", similar to what happened tonight, "when technology is available". And the eighth paragraph of the proposed policy has been modified to include the phrase, "according to Sanford School Committee Policy, BEDA and MRSA 406". That was John's, Mr. Map's question in regards to how the public is notified at meetings. And we have some policies that are in place that dictate how we notify the public. And we included that in your packet as well for you guys to look at. So I recommend, recommend the policy for approval to you guys tonight. If you'd like me to read it, I can.
No, does anybody want Steve to read it? Go to make him. I think we all, yeah, we all reviewed it. Thanks, Steve. I know if we wanted to just make you read it just because it's fun. Wave the reading. Mr. Rue waves reading. I will make a motion to adopt policy BED as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Mr. Rue. Any discussion? I gotta remember Paula's kind of behind me now, so I'm sorry. I was looking that way. Okay, no discussion? All in favor? All in favor, that's for, none against. Passes unanimously. Good job, Steve. Okay, so now we're onto items for future agenda. From earlier discussion about having a workshop for discussing the, I don't know, masking metrics? Would that be the best way to word it? There's probably, I'm sure there's a number of kind of ancillary issues with that, which would be good to be able to have that in a workshop setting. Anything else, anybody? Paula, I'm gonna look at you first. Items for future agendas? Okay, and Paula was just saying with the, the pool testing, maybe that same workshop, we could kind of have that fallen under that as well, kind of all things, all things COVID, if you will. Anything, John, Amy? Are you all good? Okay, calendar announcements, Matt?
We do have two school committee meetings coming up in September. With next Monday, the Labor Day holiday, we'll have a meeting on September 13th and September 20th. The plan is, I see, dividing those up amongst our various principles to give opening of school updates for that. So we'll kind of divide those out for those two dates. And also talking with Brett Williams, I think Brett would like an opportunity to come and also give an update on where things stand with the Performing Arts Center, especially in relation to COVID for that.
Sounds good. Any other calendar announcements? Anybody wants to bring up?
And as I mentioned earlier, our next meeting for the advisory committee for the high school technical center schedule is going to be Monday, Monday, September 20th. We'll have that in the afternoon at 2:30 prior to this. And there is a chance that we may have some student reentry hearings as well coming up in the future as well.
Okay. You have something, Amy? No? Okay, it looked like you were like ready to go. I just want to say again, before we wrap up, anybody tuning in now? The first was half hour, 45 minutes of the meeting. We did have sound issues. We recorded on Zoom and that will be posted to the website for your perusal. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Rue? And who would like to second it? Is that you, Paula? Paula seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we're adjourned. Have a nice night, everybody.